Yeah.
Um.
Recording in progress.
I can talk to you afterwards.
I just was curious.
Good evening, everybody. Do we have anybody? We do have somebody on the internet.
Lights on, yep.
So the Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on Tuesday, May 9th, at 7:00 PM at the Newton Town Hall. First thing I would like to do is salute the flag. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first thing on the agenda tonight is a continuation of 125 Development New Hampshire Corp., a Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for the amended site plan at 3579 Puzzle Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as TaxMap 14 Block 1, Lot 274. So this project has been continued since, I believe, September of 2022. Since the last meeting, the applicant has formally requested that they are withdrawing their amended site plan. So I'll just read the letter that we received last Thursday from Mr. Coleman McDonough. Dear Board members, let this letter serve as formal notice that 125 Development Corporation is withdrawing the amended site plan on Lot 274. If anybody has any questions, I can be reached at his phone number, Coleman McDonough. So that application has been withdrawn. Jim, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Yep, just a couple of things. So the planning board never actually accepted jurisdiction of the application, even though it has been from September, because it was never deemed complete. They hadn't provided enough information for the planning board to deem it complete. But because they have withdrawn their application from the planning board for an amended site plan, you are out of the decision tree for that property right now, as has been brought up in numerous planning board meetings, and it's recorded in the minutes. There are some deficiencies on that site from its approved site plan. But any additional action that would be taken by the town would have to really go through your normal code enforcement process, which is really ultimately your select board. Whether they choose to pursue that or not is up to them. If there were to be an enforcement issue issued, likely one of the remedies would be that they need to get an amended site plan. So they may, at some point potentially, need to come back to the planning board, but at this point, it is outside of your purview. They have every right to withdraw. The reasonings I would recommend you don't speculate on, you don't speculate in public or during the meeting. But that's just sort of where we are. It is, there's nothing you can do at this point. The only thing that you could do, if you wanted, would be to have a formal communication with the select board. But that would only be advisory. The select board does not have to listen to you. There's no formal mechanism for that.
And I have one question, just so it's clear. The current approved site plan would reference a May 2014, 2014 approval, I believe?
Yes. There have been some occupancy permits that have gone in and some change of uses that have been approved, but the actual physical site and how it is constructed would go back to that original approval.
Okay. Jim, can you just put that in the minutes, just so in a couple of years?
Oh, yeah. I will be.
We have that. And then can we allow the public to comment on that, or is Board, not that I just, I understand there's questions and concerns?
It's up to the Board if you want to entertain questions or comments. Whether you respond to them, you might want to take, depend, might depend on the comment or question. But it is not a comment on the application. I just want to make sure that's really clear. It has been withdrawn.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board?
Oh, mine with me.
Roger.
Thank you. I'm Roger Hamill, live at 17 Spruce Lane. Seeing that the amended site plan has been withdrawn by the developer, and seeing that during the consideration of that application, evidence was presented that showed that the conditions of the site are not in compliance with the approved site plan. Specifically, the lack of landscaping for development from the abutters, the stormwater management that was installed is inadequate to handle the runoff, and the retaining wall that was installed without approval, and the safety of that wall has been in question because it was not certified by an engineer. I'm requesting that the Board formally refer this matter to the Code Enforcement Officer and/or the Board of Selectmen for possible enforcement action.
Thank you.
So as a selectman for the town of Newton, I have already started to, I have asked Jim to gather that information that Roger was just talking about, so that it can be presented to the Code Enforcement Officer and as well as the interim town assistant, so that we can pursue said manners, again, that Roger was talking about, so that we can get these discrepancies taken care of. So all of that's going to be going to, like I said, the interim town administrator and the Code Enforcement Officer to take up.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments? Perfect. Now we have a bunch of Board, oh, sorry, Jim.
Would you like to codify that or memorialize that with a motion? Otherwise, I have one planning board member that asked me to send some paperwork.
Sure. Do we, can I have a motion to accept the withdrawal from 125 Development for Lot 274 for the amended site plan?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Just because you're all here, you don't have to do a roll call. You can just raise your hands. Or not, if it's.
Yep.
Makes it a little faster.
Thank you. That hasn't happened.
I know.
Four years.
Really? And, Mr. Chair, I still have to have it individually in the minutes, so.
It helps you out?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Board Business. So the first thing on the agenda for Board Business is the acceptance of the meeting minutes from April 11th, 2023.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
Basically, you accepted the withdrawal, but it would be, I think, helpful for a motion to do exactly what Mr. Marshon said you were going to do, that it would be a board action to refer it, rather than just the ex officio member.
Sure, if you want to put that in a motion. It doesn't bother me.
Sure, to.
Officially communicate to the Board of Selectmen the change of, the withdrawal of the application. How about that? And that the.
And for further.
Possible enforcement action.
Or follow-up from the Code Enforcement Officer.
Okay.
Second.
So Barbara made.
I amended the original.
Oh, you're amending the original motion?
Yes.
That works better. Do we have to re-roll it because we're amending it?
I would just do a new vote. So you did the withdrawal vote. This is a vote to communicate with the select board.
Right.
That's what I actually was asking for in the first place.
Okay.
Was there a question down there?
No, I was just getting ready to say aye.
Moving right along.
So all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
We good now? Okay, so moving on to Board Business. Acceptance of the meeting minutes from the 11th of April 2023.
I move to accept a minute.
Is that Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
We're all here. We can just, all in favor, correct?
All in favor.
Yeah, all in favor, aye.
He just likes saying that.
Mr. Moran, since this will rarely happen, why don't you just run the roll?
Sure.
And.
I tried.
That's unanimous.
Next on the agenda is approval of the NEPRAM manifest for $134.37. Mostly mailings in mileage to the registry.
I did email this out late tonight. I was expecting one final bill to come in today. It did not, so. I apologize. Usually KV Partners arrives, it should have arrived, and today's bill probably won't show up until Thursday.
I make a motion to approve the NEPRAM manifest, $134.37.
Second.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Next is Rockingham Planning Commission's review of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment.
Well, given our quieter agenda this evening, I think this is a good opportunity to talk housing. I will say, I've given versions of this presentation to now a number of planning boards, a number of different audiences, so I'm going to go through it. If you have questions as I'm talking, it's probably best for us to do it as we're going through. There are a lot of terms. There's a lot of things I'm going to cover. Jim is going to have a copy, and we can email this out, but this is basically sort of a kickoff of getting your heads around housing as we go through the housing grant that you currently have. So this is the Rockingham Planning Commission, that's where I work's Regional Housing Needs Assessment. It's a behemoth. If you need some light reading, because you can't sleep, this is your document. I say that because it's very data-heavy. Very, there are 92 different parameters related to housing that we looked at. That only scratches the surface on telling the story of housing. Part of my job with your housing grant will be to dive into the Newton housing story, but getting an understanding of the state, the region, to help understand where Newton fits in that spectrum, and housing in general as a topic is sort of a good place to start some of that conversation. We're going to do some outreach. We're going to do some deeper data dives. I recently got some of your assessing data to do some of that deeper data dive, but this is kind of our starting point. So I can go to the next slide, Jim. So housing is really big in the news these days. It is from the local level to the regional level, to the state level, to the national level, to the international level. There are headlines everywhere. There is talk of housing everywhere. It is, I'm going to say, the topic du jour for some very good reasons. So the purpose and history of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment is that all of the planning commissions, there are nine of us in the state, are tasked, as one of our statutory requirements, to develop a regional housing needs assessment, to basically be used as an advisory document for our municipalities as they are making land use decisions. The other thing that it does is it helps towns to determine if they are in compliance or not with the state's workforce housing law. Basically, what the workforce housing law says is that towns have to provide a realistic and reasonable opportunity for workforce housing to be built. Doesn't mean they have to build it. It doesn't mean that they can't require basic things like environmental protections and health, safety, things. It just says that you have to provide realistic opportunities. I'm going to come back to this statute, but this is one of the hot topics in many of our communities, because everybody's questioning, is my town in compliance with this state law that I have to be in compliance with? It is not an easy yes or no answer. It's very complex, but I'm going to come back to that. Technically, we are supposed to do the Regional Housing Needs Assessment every five years. We do not do it every five years because we are given no funding to do it. We end up getting funding through various entities, including, this happens to be coming from ARPA, I'm sorry, so COVID money. We've gotten it through HUD previously. So the last one was really done in 2012, and it was published as part of our 2015 Regional Master Plan. So, yep.
Are you going to define what workforce housing is?
I am.
Okay. Then I'll stop talking. Thank you.
Yep. I'm coming back to it, because I want to talk about the bigger picture of housing before I get to the statute. So the last Regional Housing Needs Assessment was done in 2015 using 2022 data, I'm sorry, 2012 data. This current Regional Housing Needs Assessment uses 2020 census data and uses American Community Survey data, which is run through the Census Bureau, but it is a more routine data metric, where they are collecting data every three months from a subset of the population, and then they aggregate it over five years. So it is using the latest national state census data that we have available. So some of the factors that influence housing in the RPC region, and also just generally, our population increases, the fact that our population is getting older. We're one of the oldest states in the country. Housing production has slowed, and when I say housing production, I just mean adding a number of housing units or dwellings. It does not just mean houses. It can be converting large buildings into apartments, just number of residents that people can have. So that's what housing production means. The cost of housing is increasing. That's probably not a shock to anybody. Shifts in employment trends and in-migration rates are changing, so with COVID, we started having a lot more flexibilities with a lot of the population of where they can work and where they can't work. Where people are coming from to live in New Hampshire has shifted. Our current housing stock doesn't necessarily meet the needs of our community. We have an older housing stock. We have a disproportionate number of single-family houses that typically in the past 30 years have been built larger. That doesn't necessarily fit every age and life-stage demographic that is out there. Our incomes have also lagged relative to housing prices. That's a very common thing across the entire country. So I'm going to kind of go through most of those factors sort of one by one, to sort of give you the data behind them. Our regional population is increasing, so we have actually increased by about 12% population-wise in the past 20 years. So for those of you that aren't quite as familiar with the Regional Planning Commission, our districts are not aligned with counties. My RPC region is 27 of the 34 communities in Rockingham County, but the easy way to describe it is Salem to Portsmouth, Raymond to Seabrook. That is the area we cover. So when you see the term region in some of this data, it is the RPC region. Every other planning commission did virtually the same plan. They look a little bit different, but we all coordinated on all of our data. So our population is increasing. We are not the fastest-growing region in the state, but we are in the top three. It is actually the least region that has, percentage-wise, seen the biggest increase. So next slide. Sorry, Jim, I'm not keeping up with you. And I'm three ahead of you, because I keep forgetting to tell you to go. Can you keep going? Because I'm changing it on my screen, and I'm not telling you to. All right, next one. There you go. Our housing production has slowed. So this is just how many houses are we building in a given year? You can see that our peak in 2003, I'm sorry, 2003, we were building a little over 1,300 houses in our region per year. That's how many building permits were pulled for single-family, duplex, multifamily, manufactured home. Then we had the Great Recession, and it crashed. We have never gotten anywhere close to some of those numbers we were seeing in the early 2000s. We have never really recovered numbers-wise in that housing production number. And with the pandemic, that also caused things to plunge, partially because of workforce, partially because of supply and lag in just materials. Some of it was just everybody was locked in their houses. All right, next slide. This is getting to our housing stock a little bit. About half of the housing stock in our region could, on the basic qualification, that it is 50 years old, that's the basic qualifier for something is a historic structure. There's a lot of other things that go into what is a historic structure, but 50 years is the basic threshold. Most of our houses are that old. Many of them are significantly older than just that 50 years. So we haven't been building a lot. Maybe that's a good thing, maybe that's a bad thing. So I'm giving you lots of information. Take it in, kind of form your opinions based on the information. All right, next slide. So another factor of housing production has slowed is how many owner-occupied units do we have? So you own your home. How many renter-occupied units do we have? So our renter-occupied units in the past 20 years have barely risen, about 1,200 units in the entire region. That's not a lot of rentals. We've had a little bit closer to 4,000 housing units, actually, that have been built. Keep in mind, our population over the past 20 years has gone up by almost 12%. So the other factor that goes into what your housing production is, that sort of makes why you might need more of one type of housing or not, is that we don't have a lot of vacancy. That means there is, if you want a home, good luck. If you want to buy a home, it will take you longer to be able to buy a home, simply because there is not a lot of stock on the market right now. If you want to rent a place to live, there are not a lot of vacant rentals. So the healthy production that is considered, if you can go to the next slide. Sorry, I may have skipped something in there. Anyway, the healthy production is considered that you will have a 5% vacancy rate for renters. That means that 5% of your rental units are vacant at any given time. That allows people to move in, move out, change apartments because of costs, because of life circumstance. People are downsizing. People are having growing families. It allows for more flexibility. For owner-occupied, having about a three-to-six-month housing stock of houses that are on the market, homes that are on the market, condos, townhouses, manufactured homes, that's considered a healthy stock of housing for sale. Earlier this year, we were down to less than one week of for-sale units of any price range. And these numbers are of any price range, not affordable, doesn't have to be affordable, doesn't have to be the high end, low end, all of them. So if you wanted to buy a house earlier this year, you had a six-day stock, and if everybody bought all those houses, no new houses came on, there were no more houses. All right. Next slide. Oh, sorry, can you go back up, Jim? Can you go back up? So the population is aging. We have some of the oldest residents in our region. About the only other older region is Coawas County. They're the winners, but we're amongst the oldest. Our youngest populations in the region are in Portsmouth, Raymond, Sandown, Danville, and Brentwood. Those tend to be a lot of bedroom communities, not necessarily Raymond, but Sandown, Danville, and Brentwood, they're bedroom communities. They often have seen population increases related to the school districts. Our oldest population are in Rye and Newcastle. They top out of an average population of 55. So the average age in our region in 2010 was 43 years old. The average age in 2020 was 47. So Newton, your average age right now is 44.7. So if you're above that, you're a little bit older. If you're below that, well, get some of your friends maybe to move to town, and we'll lower that down a little bit. But the housing that we might need for those different populations are different. Younger families might need more room. Older folks might want to downsize because they don't want to take care of a huge house, or they might not want to have the maintenance issues, or they might have another place that they want to live up here seasonally. There's a lot of different factors. But our population being an older population has other community and societal impacts. You guys are going to be going through the age-friendly process through my office. I think that will really help to inform, especially this topic, related to housing and the needs. And I'm really interested in having Sergeant Woods and some of the other 55-plus communities in town participate in this conversation for that reason, to make sure your housing stocks are matching your community needs.
Do you have data for a larger subset, or is it only New Hampshire?
Yeah, we have the statewide data. Something I'm going to hand out, and I'll show you guys. We've started doing some data analysis that is Newton, the region, and the state. So you'll be able to see the whole gamut. But yeah, we have all of the data for.
I'm just curious.
All of the demographics, yeah. But if there's something in particular you're more interested in, let me know. Thank you.
I was actually wondering if you had, like, New England, or is it generally, like, New England is getting older, or the US is getting older?
New England in general is getting older. It's pretty much Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine. Of the three, Maine is the oldest of the New England states. New Hampshire is second. It's either Vermont or Rhode Island that come in third, and most of Vermont's younger population is really around Burlington area. But yeah, we're just in general getting older.
Okay.
We're also living longer, so there's pros there.
We're all getting older every day.
Yep, same rate. All right, going down to the next one. The cost of housing. So I want everybody to think in your head, what do you pay for your mortgage, or your rent, or if you no longer pay rent or a mortgage, what was the last payment you had to pay? Is that more or less than 30% of your household income? So you don't have to tell me, I don't want to know, but if you pay more than 30% of your household income in your mortgage or rent, your utilities, and then if you own your home, include your property tax in there, and insurance.
Sure, okay.
If you pay more than 30%, you are considered cost-burdened. 30% is the threshold for affordability. That is the basic HUD threshold for affordability. It does vary based on how many people live in your, how many people live in your household. So if you're a single-family household, it does matter, and they only count people that can earn a wage. Children aren't necessarily counted in that. That is considered your cost burden. So the median gross rent in the RPC region went up by almost 50% from 2010 to 2022. The price of a home increased by basically 100%. It's 99%. So in the RPC region, in 2020, the annual household income, these are based off of a four-person household, four owners, and then a three-person household for renters. To be able to own a home or to rent and not pay more than 30%, you needed an income of about $70,000 for renters and $117,000 for owners.
It's depressing. It still doesn't feel like it's enough, actually. Please stop.
Can you do the next slide, Jim? All right, so to break it down another way, because I'm going to, some of this I'll repeat, because it is really complex, and I'm trying to get your heads wrapped around it. I'm still trying to wrap my head around most of it. So the median home sale price in 2022 in New Hampshire was $527,000. Now that takes in cost in Portsmouth, cost in Hampton, cost in Rye, cost in Salem, cost in Raymond, cost in Newton. Newton, on average, is below Rye and Hampton. Newton on average is below Rye and Hampton and Portsmouth and Newcastle. You are not the least expensive community, you are not the most expensive community. So if you figure a 20% down payment, that's $105,000 on a house. The monthly payment principal and interest with a almost 7% interest rate. Interest rates have gone down since we originally did the statistic a little bit on a 30 year mortgage. And then you did your monthly payment and you included a 40% cost for utilities and property taxes. That means that you need an income for affordability for that average home sale price of $155,000. So Jim, will you go back up to the previous? So these are the median gross rent and home prices for our region. But to be able to have the average home sale price for 2022, you had to have a higher income than the average, I'm sorry, annual household income from 2020. So the prices have gone up significantly versus income. All right. Next one. So this just illustrates the home value index of how much we're houses selling for over from 2020, from 2000 to 2022 versus median income. I will say this graph does not account for inflation over that 22 year time period. But as you can see, the home prices versus income have not kept up with each other. And New Hampshire is tracking a little bit higher than the United States because we're a little bit more of an expensive region compared to other parts of the country. But the trend is tracking the same as everything else. All right, next slide. So this is employment trends and in migration. So most people that try to buy a home in New Hampshire are from New Hampshire. The next biggest state is actually Massachusetts. So of people that come from out of state to buy a home, they're predominantly coming from Massachusetts. But they are also coming from Colorado, California, in a few cases, Texas. And we are also the fourth highest in the United States of people moving into our state. So a lot of people are moving into Idaho, North Carolina, and Maine. Well, we're number four. So people want to move here. So I know Idaho seems like sort of a funny. They're having a little bit of an energy boom, they're also very affordable. So there has been a fairly large chunk of folks from California, but also the Washington, Oregon area that are moving to Idaho for lifestyle and cost of living reasons.
It'll change when they all move.
Well, they drying up, that's why.
You know, there, there's also, the reason I have this quote on the bottom talks about climate migration. What that is, is people that are moving because they have experienced some level of natural hazard. Call it, you want to call it by climate change, you want to call it just increases in storms and floods and wildfires and earthquakes and drought. The Northeast, we are not immune from natural hazards certainly, but all weather projections, scientific projections into the future, will continue to have floods and we're gonna have floods, but we should have fresh water. We will have droughts, they will not last for months and months and months and years and years and years. We still will get snowstorms, we still will see more intense storms. We're gonna get all of that, but we will have water. And if you've ever, know, have friends that live out west, you've ever lived out west, water is a big deal out there. All right, next slide. So this is getting into that occupancy rate a little bit of like how much housing stock do we have for sale? So in 2010 for renters, the vacancy rate, and that's 5% is the target. 2010, we were about 3%. In 2022, we were at 0.6%. So that's that one week. I'm sorry, that's not the one, I'm sorry, that's the 0.6%. That's a 10th of what we should have. The one week is the months to absorb for the houses for sale. So that you want about a three to six month housing stock. We had six days. This is getting into that affordability snapshot. So I had you think about how much you pay for your own housing costs compared to your household income. The regional cost burden for renters. So 42% of renters in our region pay more than 30% of their income in housing costs. So renters generally spend more on housing than people that own their homes. For the region, only 26% of homeowners spend more than 30% of their household income on housing costs. Basically, it is better to own a home at this point for a cost burden than to rent. You have more say, you probably have a lower mortgage interest rate than that 6.9% we're at right now. You probably have more home equity. So in general, it is better to be an owner than a renter.
That's all based on 2020 data, correct?
Correct. So it doesn't really capture the latest, doesn't really capture COVID. But across the, so that's, it's a little harder to get at, at the municipal level. But across the region, it's statistically significant.
I think it's just gonna close the two gaps.
I think part of that too, Jen, is, and you know, we go back to the economy and you can go to any state, and this is a proven fact. When you talked about like Vermont, Burlington, right? Burlington is the main epicenter of Vermont. Boston, Massachusetts, Concord, New Hampshire, right around the capitals. When you work closer in and around those capitals and in the states, you will make a better hourly wage than you do when you work in the suburbs, out and about. And for years in a lot of these states, in the younger generations like Jen's talking about, and now there's been a seismic shift in it to where those same people were living in those industrial areas and they were renting. And now what they've decided is they're getting older and they need to get more bang for their buck. And with, because of COVID and all of that, they're able to, they want to shift out of that area. They're willing to commute now and still be able to make that same money that they were making while they were living and working in these big capitals. So that shift, you're getting that flux of all those people wanting to move out, especially with COVID, like Jen was saying, it's not even in there because when they realize how many people and the limitations that were put on with such a heavy population loaded in one area, it has caused people to take notice of what is actually going on in the world and what's taking place. And this is why we're starting to get an even bigger influx of these people wanting to move up here into New Hampshire.
So you'll notice, that's why I talked about employment trends and shifting in migration because we have shifted how we work in many industries, not all. But it is in some cases displacing people that have to work and live in closer proximity to their jobs. Whether you like it or not, I mean, there's a lot of factors, but that is certainly a factor that is, I'm gonna say, taking away housing stock from people that maybe already live here or are looking to shift where they live. All right, now I'm gonna come back to the workforce housing statute. So the workforce housing statute was adopted in 2008 by the legislature. The reason it was adopted was to recognize that there is a need for housing. Even back in 2008, there was a need for housing. And to realize that there are ways that some municipalities use zoning to try to stop housing. They try to make it, whether consciously or not, it's not usually a planning board saying, we want to stop all housing, so we're gonna do this. It's not, it's not that simple, but to make it so that municipalities at least consider and allow through their regulations the ability for someone to construct workforce housing and not allow municipalities to just put up a wall. So there are a couple of basic thresholds. Workforce housing is affordable housing. It is not low income housing per se, although low income housing can qualify. Workforce housing also has some parameters. And that workforce housing in the state to qualify under this statute for municipalities allow for it, workforce housing has to be at least 50% of the units. I'm gonna use an apartment complex because it's a little easier to explain it. If you had an apartment complex with 100 units, at least 50% of them have to have more than one bedroom. They have to at least have two. It's accounting for families. No more than 20% of those units can be age restricted. So you can't build 100 unit apartment that's only 55 plus. You can have 20% of those be age restricted because there is a need for affordable housing across all spectrums. That is what workforce housing is, is there are income thresholds that you have to fall below, and that's that 30% for owner occupied and 30% for rental. The statute goes into three and four person households, but that's the basic ten. 30% of housing costs, so mortgage, rents, utilities, taxes if it's owner occupied, insurance if it's owner occupied. You need at least 50% of your land area to allow for workforce housing. Doesn't mean you have to build it, doesn't mean you have to go out and find a developer and say, you have to build this, you have to allow for it. If you have an inclusionary housing ordinance, that means you have an ordinance that promotes workforce housing, you are automatically deemed in compliance with the workforce housing law. Or if your, your housing stock, just by the nature of the market, meets your, it's called your proportionate regional fair share, then you also are in compliance. What that means is does, in this case, Newton, based on the percentage of households, population, and a few other factors for the RPC region, are you matching your percentage of the population of that region? Are you providing enough workforce or workforce qualifying housing? All right, I know I just said a whole lot of things and probably most of you have dazed out on. Does either your natural housing stock, is there enough that's affordable? Or do you need to have regulations on the books that allow for more?
And that's for the region, so one community can significantly skew?
Yep, so
Windham and Salem.
Every time Portsmouth or Salem or Epping or Raymond or any town in our region, every time they allow any kind of housing to be built, basically the numbers are changing all the time. Let's say Salem suddenly only allows workforce housing to be built. That changes the amount of workforce housing the region needs. So that, that means that the amount that Newton as a town has to have shifts. So to get at that, the state hired a consultant to look at the population, the housing number, the labor markets, and then project those all out to 2040 and try in projecting those numbers of how many affordable housing units or market rate units did every town need to have. So we projected that out and included in those numbers trying to get to those vacancy rates of 5% and the vacancy rate for owner occupied for three to six months of stock. So we increased that over the 27 year time period. The fair share analysis is a component of our regional housing needs because it helps towns to begin to understand if you are in compliance with this state law. I'm gonna show you the numbers, I'm gonna go through it, but I want to really emphasize it is a number. Housing is more than just a number. It is a deeper conversation. We are going to get into actual numbers more with your tax assessing data than we have on these estimates and projections. So yes, you, you have to be in compliance with the state law. I'm going to help you figure out how to get decisions so that you can be in compliance with the state law. No town in our region is likely currently meeting their fair share because we simply lack affordable housing. It is not Newton's fault, it is not Newton to fully solve the problem. You are part of the solution and part of the problem. All right.
Just to help understand this quickly.
Yep.
So like when Portsmouth puts in like all those, you know, single bedroom apartments that, you know, would they have like four or five buildings or something in the last like five years?
Yep.
So that negatively impacts the entire surrounding in regards to the
It does in the fact that most of what has been built in Portsmouth is certainly not affordable. Portsmouth has built some affordable housing, has many other communities, but it is not
Easy to use them as a
Yeah, absolutely. But it, it shifts the equation. There is no prescribed methodology in statute or regulation on how to calculate the regional proportionate fair share of affordable or workforce housing. So we use best practices, but there is certainly more than one way to do that. There is no consideration in the projections that we did that take into account the availability of water, wastewater, septic capacity, wetlands. Basically, it treats every place the same. So that's why I say it is a number, it's a starting point for our conversation. Try not to get too hung up on the number because it is a projection. All right, so between 2000 and 2020, we actually added in this region a little over 12,000 housing units. Between 2020 and 2040, the projected needs for our region are 14,563. So over the entire region by 2040, we need about 14,000 overall housing units. That's not all affordable, that's just sheer numbers of housing units. Our housing needs assessment took into account population projection, household projection. We did split renters and owner occupied. We took into account labor markets, trying to get that vacancy rate and also projecting that out for affordable, not affordable. I think go to the next one, Jim. I'm gonna hand you the methodology and the actual number. It has all of the other towns for you to look at, but I try not to do that until the end because again, I don't want you dwelling on the number. I know this is hard to read, I've got a better version of it in just a slide or two. Jim, can you do the next one? So this is my, housing is more than just a number. All right, next slide. So by 2025, this methodology says that Newton, I apologize, that still says Hampton. I did Hampton last week. Newton, these are your numbers though, needs 106 new units. So in two years, you need 106 new housing units. Of those 106, 38 of them need to be affordable, whether you have income restrictions on them or they are just naturally market rate affordable. And 68 of them can just be market rate. That's what the projections show. By 2030, you need a total, and this is cumulative, so the 106 is included in this, 194. 70 need to be affordable, 124 need to be market rate. So that's in seven years. 2035, you need 254 total units. 2040, you get to 288 total units. 102 need to be affordable. That should be 185, need to be market rate.
That's combined rental and owner.
So all of these numbers for total affordable or market rate basically split out that about 30% need to be rental, about about 30% need to be rental, about 70% need to be owner-occupied. So that gets you to your regional proportionate fair share of workforce housing by 2040 should be 102 more affordable units.
So I know all these numbers for all the towns are obviously going to be a go, we need all these in 2040, but do any of these numbers take into account that we want to leave land? That, is this taken into consideration at all? We want everyone to have an acre, nothing? So we just need to add all these houses and take away the land if needed be?
Okay. This treats the land completely sterilely.
Okay.
That does not mean that, so realistically, you probably won't hit any of these numbers. Most of the towns will not hit any of these numbers, particularly the ones that don't have any centralized water or sewer. You can't get the density based on your current infrastructure. There are lots of things that Newton can do that meet other community goals of open space, natural resource protection, community character, heritage, that still can help with housing. So that's why I like to give the numbers. It's a starting point, there's a whole lot else to consider. The state did hire the consultant that did these numbers, and when we got the numbers in my office back, we were all taken back at just like how sterile and how lack of considering other things that fall into this, but they had to use a methodology, and they used a very scientifically sound, tested methodology, but it's numbers. And these are our homes and our communities, so it can't just be a number.
Jim, can I ask a question?
Yep.
So basically what they've done is they said, okay, there's this much available land, and we're going to fill up every piece of available land.
Nope.
With housing.
Nope, that's not what they did. They looked at how many people live here, how many people live in the region, how much housing we have, and what they think it needs to be by 2040, based on increases in population and the natural increase on housing projection.
So there is no, in this study, consideration that, and I don't know these numbers off the top of my head, Brentwood has three times more open land than Newton?
There is not.
So therefore they like just, they can fit more houses?
So let me give an example that I think kind of illustrates.
That's what you're getting.
So Newington, all the malls that are in Newington, Newington has to have something like 63 new housing units by 2040. Newington has a very small population, it's a little over 1,000. It's just around 1,000. They only have to have 63 new units, but there's all, they have a wastewater treatment plant they're hooked up to, they have water they're hooked up to, they have honestly already developed space that could be rehabilitated. The folks that live in Newington probably don't like that I'm saying this, but they could convert some of those buildings to housing and have more than 63. They're near an interstate, they're near employment centers, they're near public transit. They have a lot of reasons why there should probably be more than 63 units in the next 27 years. Newton's in a different situation, so it does not treat the land, it doesn't consider it.
Okay.
Which gives me a lot of heartburn as a land-use and natural resource planner, but, all right, something that did consider the land, if you can go to the next slide, Jim. So part of the regional housing needs assessment that we actually had some control over, we did want to look at what was on the land. So there are some barriers and opportunities to housing. There's public perception, there's economics, there's construction costs, there's infrastructure investment or the lack thereof, and there's land-use regulations. You guys have a lot to say about the land-use regulations in Newton. I mean, the voters certainly have a say, but you have a strong influence. Those are things like environmental restrictions. It's probably not good to build in the wetlands or to build in the floodplain. You have dimensional standards, you might not want your neighbor's house to completely shadow your yard. There's performance standards, the stormwater regulations, the town adopted a couple of years ago to make sure that the stormwater that is being treated on-site is adequately being treated to protect water quality and keep the neighbor's yard from flooding. There are use allowances. You guys don't allow some uses in town because you have found them to be negatively influenced for health, safety, community character reasons. There's also things like building codes. You, two years, two or three years ago, we got into your zoning ordinance, the updated building code and fire codes. Those are for life-safety reasons. All right, so there's lots of barriers, lots of opportunities. So the map that's on here, what we did is we took away the borders of our towns, and we looked at where is the major transit routes, just forget people being able to get to where they need to go in employment. Where is their water, like public water systems? Where is their available wastewater system? So where are the pipes in the ground? Or how close in proximity are those? And I know that this is a small map, it was meant to be a 40,000-foot view of our region. But what it is showing is where are there places where you could probably build more housing because the infrastructure is there? There's roads, there's water, there's wastewater. And where can you not build housing because it's a wetland? It's conservation land, so it's got legal restrictions on it. Places that are red, we identified as probably having very low opportunity of having housing built. Places that are green, higher opportunity. This does not take into account any zoning. It merely takes into account roads, water, wastewater availability, and there's not the wetlands or the land conservation. So if you look at Epping, which is kind of like the northernmost, I don't know if you can point on that, Jim? Go up. Nope, Epping is up.
Up.
Go up, up, right there, that red area. So there isn't an Epping that that is so red in northwest Epping is because that is all conservation land. There's not a lot out there, it's actually, it'd be a lovely spot to have a home, but it got conserved by the residents of Epping a couple of years ago. If you look down in Seabrook, which is along the coast, on the other side of 95, right on that western edge, right over on the, a little bit more, Jim? To the left?
Left.
Left, little more left?
Up.
Yep, right there. Areas over there are pretty green because they have water and wastewater, there's not a lot of building, but a reason you might not want to build housing there is that's where the entire town of Seabrook gets their water from, it's their groundwater zone for their drinking water system.
It's full of arsenic.
Probably.
They have like one of the only arsenic removal plants in the state. They put it back in the ground, actually, it's fascinating.
All right.
It's a big circle.
But there's also a lot of wetlands over there, so yeah, you could build some housing, probably not going to get a lot of density. You go farther up, 95, through parts of Hampton Falls, Hampton, North Hampton, into Greenland a little bit, there's more opportunity. But one of the reasons there's more opportunity is because along there, there's already major transportation corridor routes. So maybe, do you build more density where there's already density, or do you ask some places to have a little more density in things like villages? That's probably about where Newton's density opportunities are, not so much with, you're not going to be an exeter, you're not going to be downtown Hampton, you're not going to be Portsmouth, you're not going to be Salem. What might you want to consider for land-use regulations to get a little bit more housing without completely ruining what is the reason people like Newton? So there's some opportunity. I think Newton's interesting in that you're kind of in between, you're near some things because you're kind of near Plastow and 125, you're near Boston, so people, the commuting isn't too bad, but you have very little infrastructure. You have no wastewater, and very little in public water systems. You have a few small water systems in Newton, but you're pretty much on private on-site So I just want to show this as far as the, the land is a huge part of the consideration, don't just focus on the number. All right, next slide, I'm going to try and wrap up a little bit, I know this gets a little data-heavy, so. Just a couple of things for Newton I wanted to point out for population. So your population in 2000 was about 4,200 people, you're at 4,800 as of 2020, so you've grown. You haven't been the fastest-growing town, you're not the slowest-growing town, you're kind of in the middle. So your average age in 2010 was 40, now you're at 44.7 years old. Your school enrollment, like every other town in our region, has gone down. So in 2016, you had 640 students, and in 2021, you had 562. So that is K through 12.
Could you repeat those numbers, please?
2016, you had 640 students, and 2021, you had 562.
Thank you.
That is from New Hampshire Department of Education.
I was just going to say, is that Sandborn in total, or is that Newton?
It is Newton's K through 2 student population. So I know that you guys go to Sandborn, but it would have been your student population that went there. It is not the full number from Sandborn.
Just that number seems a little high.
I'm going with the data I was given. Your median household income in 2010 was $87,000 per year. In 2020, it was 121,000. In 2010, 95% of your housing units, which was about 1751, 95% of them were occupied. So you didn't have a very high vacancy rate. Your housing populate, I'm sorry, your total units have gone up to 190, I'm sorry, 1,946 total housing units, and again, they are about 95% occupied.
When they counted vacancy, if somebody has another house, is that a vacant home for housing needs?
No, it would have been considered a seasonal home. We do have seasonal housing data. It depends on what they identify as their primary residence.
Okay.
We do have data about seasonal housing, we have some data about short-term rental housing, we have a little bit on accessory dwelling, although I think the town's data is going to be more accurate. We do not have information on homes that should not be counted because they are in such poor condition. I don't know if there are any in Newton of hand. We do not have information on illegal apartments. I guarantee there are some of those somewhere in Newton. We do however have information on household units based on total occupancy, so is it a one-person household, two, three, four, six-plus-person household? Is it a household with minor children? Is it a household that has anyone that is disabled? Does it have anyone that is a veteran, anyone that receives housing vouchers? Is it someone who is a, not only a minor, but a child under the age of five because of sort of school population? So we have a lot of additional housing population demographic data buried in here. I can give it to you in a full blast, but these are the basic statistics. Yep.
Do efficiency units come in under rentals?
Um, yes. I mean, if they're for rent, yes. We didn't, we don't look at household like physical size, like is it a micro unit, or is it a smaller, like a tiny home? As long as it can be counted as a true housing unit, so a trailer, like I can't.
Efficiency, now the, now the.
Like a boarding house?
No, we're starting to build, starting to allow people to have another unit under eight.
Oh, accessory dwellings.
Accessory dwelling, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Accessory dwellings do count as housing units, and for many communities, accessory dwellings are one of the easiest, lowest-hanging, least impactful ways to start to get at affordable units.
Okay.
In many cases, you know, if it's your elderly mother-in-law who is taking up the in-law suite, the ADU, the granny flat, you might not charge them rent, or it might be lower, but it still counts.
Still unit, yeah.
Still counts.
Okay.
A seasonal camp that is not fit to be inhabited year-round would not count. A tiny home, so a tiny home that is on wheels, so a trailer on wheels, would not be able to count as a permanent housing unit. A tiny home that is, for all efficiency, just a very small house, definitely counts. Manufactured homes also count in New Hampshire.
One of the issues that we have in Newton is, especially with the ADUs, is that there are quite a number in town that are not on the books. They exist, however, they were done either prior to the zoning requirement for.
I'll just.
The conditional use permit in order to have it, or they.
Just to.
Happened.
So I do have your.
They don't get credit.
I do have your tax assessing data, which is one of the things I'm going to dive into. I'm going to use assessing data to get a better handle on how many affordable units you already have. It is assessing data, it is not an appraisal, like if you've bought a house recently, you've probably had the home appraised before you purchased it, like what could you sell it for? It is not that, it should be pretty close as a tax assessment. So I'll be using that to get to a better idea of what your natural housing stock is. We still have to use state rental data to get an idea of what the actual rental is because I don't have the capacity to call every rental unit in town to find out what they're charging and what's their electrical rate and what is their, so I can't, I can't do that. No town in the state is going to be able to do that. We're going to get you closer, but I'll also be looking at the notes that sometimes do allude to, do they have an apartment? Because the tax assessor doesn't care if they've gotten permission from you guys or not. So I can get to that number a little bit, I'm also going to be working with Jim to get the approvals for the latest ADUs captured in that as well. I'm going to try and get you guys as much credit as I can, but I have to do it based on actual data, I can't. I can't make up a number and put it in your master plan and say, hey, look, they made it. I'm just trying, I want to get an accurate picture of what you have.
What happens if we don't make it?
If you don't make it, that's a great segue, so thank you. That's the reason, one of the reasons for doing the Housing Opportunity Grant. So we're going to do your master plan, we're going to get some outreach from folks, show them some of the numbers, and then gauge some tolerance for what do people like about housing, or what do they want the housing future to look like? In part, the goal is to increase housing opportunity in Newton. Affordable housing has to be part of that conversation because you likely don't meet the number. But if you are providing realistic and reasonable opportunity for someone to build housing in at least half of your town, which your residential districts are well above half your town, then you're also meeting the requirements. So you either have to hit the number, or you have to have rules on the books that at least allow for it. You can't control the labor markets, you can't control the mortgage rates, you can't control the land costs to a degree. You have some say over land-use regulations, which is between about 20 and 30% of the decision-making on whether or not someone can build a home. You are part of the conversation, you are not the whole conversation, you are part of the problem, you are part of the solution.
Can I offer an example? So we cannot put a regulation on the book to say that workforce housing can, is not allowed in Newton.
If you were to do that, you would be completely out of compliance with the state law.
Or, yeah, put some type of regulation that eliminates the possibility for that.
Just wanted to remind, because I think there's only one person on the board that was around at the time, I believe it was in 2008 when we instituted the village district zones in the town of Newton. And we specifically looked at areas which had larger Victorian homes, two-family homes that had been converted into single-family homes. When we looked at where those areas were as being areas where, for example, at Rose Corner, there's a massive farmhouse with a chain of barns. The idea was, in village district zones, you can have multifamily buildings by converting existing buildings or even building on. That, you know, that was one of the prime examples, was that could be converted into four. That, you know, that was one of the prime examples, was that could be converted into four apartment units and not change the look of the building at all. That, you know, the barn could be converted into two, however they want to do it. So there are areas in town that are already zoned for multifamily units. The problem is that that was 14, 16 years ago and--
2008. 2008, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So 15, right.
It's, nobody has chosen to do it. However, we made it less restrictive in those areas, and that might be a way of enhancing other areas in town.
Yep. And so another part of the housing grant that you have got was, I'm going to do a regulation audit. So I'm gonna look at, what do you have? What could you do to change it? What could you do to either add new or eliminate barriers? But also look at, what are the pros and cons to that? How much housing is likely to potentially come out of those regulation changes if you were to enact them? You know, the village district is a good example. You might not get a lot of housing, even though you already allow for it. But at least you're providing that opportunity. Maybe you should provide it throughout all of town. If you were to allow detached accessory dwellings in existing barns, well, yeah, you might get a handful of housing units. It's not gonna solve the problem. It's not gonna probably dramatically change the feel of Newton if you-- especially if you limited it to existing buildings or buildings that existed at a certain point. You know, there's give and take. You don't want, people, when you talk of, like, accessory dwellings, people often feel that it's gonna, they're gonna get overrun with ADUs. Well, the reality is that most people don't actually want an accessory dwelling at their parents. I personally don't wanna live with my in-laws. You know--
I'll put that in the notes.
You can, that's okay. But I mean, the how much housing is likely to come from small changes is not a lot. But you can also do some big changes that might result in additional housing. I mean, I think, I don't recall offhand when you guys adopted your elderly housing, your senior housing regulation, but it certainly has resulted in some building in Newton. We have some folks from Sergeant Woods. I think they're good, positive contributors to your town. It doesn't mean that more housing is bad. It just means you wanna get the right kind of housing to fit your capacity in your community.
And just from personal experience on the private side, it's not gonna affect Newton as much, but if, say, in Portsmouth, a developer can't come in, or usually the financial side, it doesn't work out to construct a affordable workforce housing unit. That, they just can't make the finances work either.
What many communities do to encourage more workforce housing is they give density bonuses. So you, if you could normally fit 10 apartments or 10 condos, well, if you have 20% of them be affordable, we'll let you do 12. So I mean, that, that probably isn't gonna work quite as well. In Newton, we can explore it, and it's something I'm gonna certainly evaluate. You know, just, you don't have the density in some areas because of the infrastructure to be able to get to that in large scale. Small scale, sure. I've got in one town a multifamily unit where they have to have, half of the units have to be affordable. There's only one in town, but it got built, and it's a six-unit multifamily. Three of the units are affordable. And it's been that way for 10 years.
And the, I believe, the new buildings on 108, that was Fitzpatrick--
They, they are affordable. In fact, I took a picture of them as I was driving here because I thought it might be a good image to have.
I think they're one-bedrooms.
They are. So you can have one-bedroom affordable units, but only to qualify under the Workforce Housing Statute for Requirements, only half of them can be one-bedroom or a studio. So those just, those are affordable. I'll say a little A when you're talking about actually having income restrictions and that being verified. That's a capital A.
They're affordable, but not workforce housing.
Got you.
Can you go to the last slide?
Sure.
Way nicer than what was there before.
Go up one. Yep, that one. I just wanted to pull this up to give folks a little bit of a caliber. These are the home sale prices from April last year to April of this year for Newton. You have a few homes that just sold. I didn't, these could be condos, these could be town homes, these could be manufactured homes. It's everything that could have been for sale that definitely are likely to qualify as affordable. You have many others that are likely to not qualify as affordable. And this is all public record. I'm not trying to pry into anybody's home they may or may not have purchased. But this is just a snapshot in one year, what the prices are in your community. And for a lot of folks, this is still shocking, even if they've heard, oh, housing prices are going up. If you look at it for your community, sometimes can tell you a different story. I will say, I did have fun pulling this up for the town of Rye.
Yeah.
Southampton, there was probably no yellow dots. There was like two houses, I believe, sold last year, three.
Possibly. I mean, they only have about 800 that live in the town, so. All right. That is, that is my spiel. I know it was a lot. We're gonna talk about it more. The Housing Opportunity Grant also requires participation in the Housing Academy. That I know that Jim was on the call today. I was on it. I will forward, or Jim can forward the materials they will be putting out. It basically is more information on just housing and how to talk about housing in your community. If you want some very general education outreach stuff, we will get into more as we move forward with this project.
That was this morning, so I haven't gone through the materials yet and figured out what to send out. Did you sign up for it? Oh, okay.
I will say, some of the emails have been a little sporadic, so I'll forward you the information.
Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
So we have two more things on the agenda before we--
I covered the Housing Opportunity Grant one.
How about the BEA webinar, Jim? Do you wanna give an update on the webinar?
Uh, yes. You received in your packet a little sheet. I've already gone over this with Ms. White. These are six changes that the board should consider.
Oh, yeah.
I try to keep you apprised whenever things change and what have you. The lot mergers, anything under a mortgage, we should get mortgager consent prior to the application. That just came up because we just, the first one in like 15 years. Second one is, and they kept stressing this, since a tie vote is not a decision, we, the board should decide whether or not, on occasions when there is an even number of voting members here and no alternates to give a seventh, which would happen anytime Mr. Marshon cannot attend, because the board cannot replace Mr. Marshon with a, with an alternate. On those occasions, the board should, the chair should be discouraged and can announce at the beginning of the meeting that he would only be voting to break any tie.
Okay. So it can be a quorum and abstain my vote?
You would abstain for the evening on-- This is only because this is the way it works out. Mr. Hamel is still on the board. Developer is in front of the board, he has to recuse himself. Now you've gone from six members to five members. You could end up with two in favor and two against. The chair would have to break the tie.
Okay. We'll deal with that if that ever happens.
I, I, these are things that are in progress. The third one is that it has been suggested that the completeness of the application be determined before the public hearing is opened. And that would be, I've already changed it in how I word the public notices that go in the paper. The public hearing is, will now be noticed as being started upon the acceptance of jurisdiction or finding the application complete. Rather than start the public hearing, then have a debate on completeness and have to keep continuing.
Jen, you had said that--
It's a little bit of semantics in that there are some municipalities, and you guys could do this, where you have to act on any application within 30 days of receiving it. So it's on your agenda, it's been noticed. You could say, this application's not complete, we're not gonna start the public hearing process, even though the public notice has been given. Most municipalities, for, in the spirit of just like time, if you think an application is complete that has been noticed, you can start the public hearing that evening. That's why you guys notice a butters. So I think what Jim is effectively saying, it is semantics of what's the public notice for versus the public hearing, where then the public will have the opportunity to speak. The public noticing prior to accepting completeness, you do not have to hear from the public. It can just be between the board and the applicant, which is how you guys have always operated.
And essentially, that's how we've been running right now anyways.
So it's some wording.
It, it, it's, I'm just trying to make sure I keep everything that the board does--
Yeah.
--on the side of legality. The other thing is that you end the public hearing and then the board deliberates. So you don't have any potential of somebody standing up here, listening to your argument, going, wait, wait, wait. I, I, I-- Yeah.
So formally closing the public hearing.
You, you, yeah, you formally close the public hearing that cuts off testimony. And that way, you don't have people trying to sway you in either direction from, from the floor.
So you've been doing it by saying, like, that's the end of public comments? In general, like, Jim, Jim is correct. As long as you are giving everybody, letting everybody know where you are with a hearing process, when they will be able to hear, be heard, like, as long as you're doing that, a minor procedural hiccup is not going to be a detriment to any vote you would have. As long as you are doing best faith effort and like doing it all as close to accurate as you can, I wouldn't worry too much. Jim is right, that is procedurally the way to go, but you haven't been doing anything wrong.
I have just, I try to keep everything so that when it goes to, something goes to court, gives them one less thing they can argue about.
And you also have the right during public comment, if people just keep coming up and reiterating the same thing, you can stop comment at that point, too.
Correct.
You can certainly have, I'll say, rules of engagement.
Yeah.
You have two minutes, don't repeat. Everybody gets a chance before you can go. You can do all of those things.
Yeah.
Like I said, these are works in progress. The next item is, and this was interesting during the webinar because you had Stephen Buckley from the NHMA say one thing, and somebody from the-- Oh, God, I forgot which organization she was from. She was also presenter. Luckily, they weren't in the same room, and there were no epees. Because they completely disagreed. One said that you had to accept the waiver, you had to grant waivers in order to achieve completeness to take jurisdiction. Mr. Buckley said, no, you have to take jurisdiction and open a public hearing before you can issue a waiver. I'm still waiting for them to argue that one out and decide which of the two because state law is really kind of moot on both points.
Right. It's not really clear.
If someone asks for a waiver, so that's a piece of information that they don't wanna have to give you for you to say that you've given them all the information that you require for an application. Let's just say they don't wanna give you the wetlands delineation. You require that. They can request a waiver from the wetland delineation. Because they have asked to not give you that, they're acknowledging that you require that information, but they are asking to not give it to you. That's why that is a complete application, assuming they've given you everything else. So I'm gonna disagree with whoever this other person was and go with Steve Buckley. A complete application is when you have all of the information or a waiver request to not give you that information. Then you can accept it as complete, open the public hearing, and then you can consider each waiver, which you might not give them the waiver. And if they don't get the waiver for the wetland, well, then they need to supply you that information.
I agree with Jen, by the way. However, I just wanted to let you know, the NHMA, you'll see in anything that I print out from theirs, that they are dead set that you don't even discuss waivers until after you've found the document to be complete and open the public hearing. And then you can do, and it's like, no. If, having the application for a waiver makes the application complete.
You could never take jurisdiction for an application that's requesting a waiver.
Exactly.
You would just sit there and be like, I can't accept it.
Right.
Yeah, it's a perfect catch-22. Next one is regarding the building inspector issuing permits within 120 days prior to town meeting dependent upon the, anything that's a warrant article proposed by the planning board or the Board of Selectmen that would affect zoning. It just suggested that that be in our--
Right, because technically, the building inspector could issue a building permit for something that hasn't been voted on yet. And then they've gotten permission to do something, and if the ordinance passes, then they're in violation of the ordinance.
Yeah, so that's the reason we generally, for anything that might cause someone to be able to receive or not receive a building permit, that's why we don't have public hearings on warrant articles until much closer to town meeting. It's why we do it in late fall, early winter, for that very reason. And if whatever's being proposed is less restrictive in particular, you don't issue the building permit.
And the final one is, and it's, this one I've actually already accomplished. Henceforth, the Chair of the Planning Board or their designee shall sign off on any commercial or light industrial occupancy permits going forward.
Where did you get that link?
We used to do that. We always used to do that.
In your letter, or the letter?
Excuse me?
The letter that you wrote for the planning board to the code enforcement?
Yeah.
I know that hasn't been circulated to everybody, but was that from the--
We, you didn't have to send the letter because I spoke to--
Okay.
The building inspector, and he said, you, yeah, it makes sense for you guys to be signing because that preserves the planning board's authority over the site plan because once the occupancy permit is granted, it's basically saying, you know, it's out of the planning board's hands. It isn't, but it makes it a lot easier for code enforcement to be able to say, the planning board hasn't signed off on this because of this, this, and this.
So that's already been resolved?
Right.
Perfect.
To make sure they, it's, it's one of the checks and balances to make sure they meet the conditions that we've set for them.
So I got that late yesterday. I was handed a copy of what the new--
Yeah. I'm not sure how that got off because the planning board always, used to do that.
Yes. But I only found out late yesterday, I'd already sent all this stuff out, so.
I can make my own opinion, but I'm not gonna share it. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
No, I just wanted to make you aware. I haven't heard anybody here mention it. I attended an interesting Zoom webinar this morning.
The Housing Atlas?
The Housing Atlas. It, it is a really neat tool to see what the zoning regulations are for all the-- It is a really neat tool to see what the zoning regulations are for all the communities around you. And Jen can probably fill you in a lot better than I can.
Yeah, so the Housing Atlas was a project done up at St. Anselms College. It is part of a national effort to get all of the zoning in every municipality basically mapped, in part to look at how, where housing barriers might occur. I will say, it's available, I'm happy to forward it to folks. It is, again, a tool, though, it does not take into consideration, when they did some of the housing opportunities, water or wastewater or land and soil conditions for septic systems, so there are a few other things with it, but I'm happy to forward it around as a tool for folks to take a look at. I mean, it is at a, at a broad scale, it's really useful, it's interesting. When you get really zooming down into it, it's a little bit less accurate for what could you actually do.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else? So I'd like to adjourn at 8:31. Thank you, everybody, for coming today.
Thank you, everybody.